Good evening. I call the Planning Commission regular meeting to order at 6:30 PM tonight. It is Thursday, January 4th, 2018. Happy New Year. And we are located in the City Council chambers at Sammamish City Hall. So, the first item of business is roll call. I'll start with my left, and it's funny, I was going to start with someone different.
But it's always me.
But, so I was going to go on my left, but of course Matthew's on my left tonight.
Matthew Petrich.
Lucino Farrell.
Larry Crandall.
Shanna Collins.
Jane Garrison.
Eric Brooks.
Okay, so there are six of us tonight. We do have a quorum, and we are missing Commissioner Anderson. She will miss the next two meetings, or two final meetings of her term. And so, even though she's not here tonight, I wanted to express my gratitude for her service. She served for, I think, two years, if not three. And I really valued her opinions, her comments, her thoughts, and her ability to really dive into all of the issues that we were studying. And I always knew that she had looked at every single document, even, not just the document, but the documents that related to the document we were looking at. So I really, really appreciated that, and I wanted to say that I'm sorry her term's over. And of course, I'll open it up if anyone else wanted to say anything.
This is Larry Crandall. Okay, I guess I've already been. I don't want to say Nancy, and I go back a long ways, but we attended many City Council meetings before we were appointed to the Commission. And she really set the stage for the City Council not only to listen, but also brought that ability to the Planning Commission, so.
I'm going to miss her terribly, too. I'm Jane Garrison. She had a point of view that I didn't understand. So, I thought it was wonderful because most of us could talk about more the engineering issues, or the actual onsite type of problems that we have. But Nancy could think about the policy and the process, and that just amazed me. And she did go deep into things, so I'm really going to miss that. It's something that I don't even want to do.
I agree. I think she was an asset, and she did have the ability to kind of zoom out, and it was good. She will be missed.
I'm going to miss Nancy. Also, I sent her an email, to that effect, so it was... It was wonderful working with her. And so Nancy, I will miss you.
Well, since she's probably going to watch this thing, I can't be the only one.
Can't be the only one.
Something nice. No, I didn't know her very long. I've only been on the Commission for six months or so, but she was definitely an asset, and I look forward to bringing, you know, the next Commission, which we're going to find out about relatively soon.
Yes, very soon. Okay, thank you all for the comments. The next item of business is the approval of the agenda. Is there any objection to approving the agenda this evening? Okay, seeing none. If there's no objection, the agenda is approved. So the next item of business is the approval of the minutes. Is there any objection to approving the minutes from December 7th, 2017? Okay, seems like there's no objection, so the minutes are approved. The next item of business is public comment, and this is the time for non-agenda public comment. It's three minutes per person, or five minutes if representing an organization. We don't have a big crowd tonight, I'll be honest. Nobody out there, you can't see that there's nobody here. So I hope people are watching on television. Oh, and Jeff, and so, Richa, are you?
No public comment?
Okay. So, no one here for...
Well, this doesn't really fit in necessarily as public comment, but I think I want to make all of us aware that if you see some lords leaving out there, there'd be 10 of them. You don't have to count. Okay. And the other thing is...
It's the tenth day of Christmas, right?
Yes, the tenth day of Christmas. Epitome will be on the Saturday, the 6th, I believe. And the other one, if you do follow Duffy Bishop, who was kind of a local singing artist, she had 12 days of coffee, and it's, this is a foamy cappuccino, I believe, on her tenth day.
All right. So with that, the next item of business is old business. And tonight, we have for old business the draft Parks Recreation and Open Space Pro Plan. That is our only item tonight. First, we'll hear a presentation from staff, and then I will open the public hearing, I will close the public hearing, and then we'll have a chance to deliberate, and just really have a discussion, or no discussion, however everyone's feeling tonight. So, I guess that means we'll go to the staff's presentation. So I will turn it over to Mr. McIntyre.
Thank you, Chair Collins. Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Doug McIntyre, Senior Planner with the Department of Community Development. To my left is Angie Fesser, our Director of Parks and Rec. And before I let her get started on the presentation, we have a few slides put together, just to kind of hit a couple topics before we go to the hearing. I wanted to reiterate a couple points. As Chair Collins mentioned, this is the second touch on this topic. The first was December 7th. Formally, there were other previous joint meetings, and there were other opportunities for public outreach and involvement prior to that. However, formally with this task at hand, this is the second touch. One point on the task for the Planning Commission is that we, as we discussed last month, that the role for the Planning Commission here, it's a little bit slightly different than more of the planning-related documents that you typically deal with. Since this is a Parks document, we are asking that the Planning Commission does take a little bit more of a broad approach to this document. And what we mean by that is the concern for consistency with the comprehensive plan, for the city vision, for how this relates to all the different planning documents that we deal with, and ensuring just an overall cohesiveness with our planning efforts. So, to that extent, the comments that I think will hear tonight are going to be, hopefully, in the more broad category, but to the extent that there are some good input, specifically, we can always forward that on to the City Council as well. The other item I wanted to touch on before I let Angie start is that, again, as mentioned at the December meeting, that there is an associated comprehensive plan amendment that is part of this proposal, and it was docketed at the end of last year, and has a way to kind of build efficiencies into our 2018 work program. We are trying to knock those out as efficiently as possible. So the first one before you is for the Parks, Rec, and Open Space Plan. That was included in your document, or sorry, your packet tonight. We had red lines associated with that, and we will touch on that briefly tonight, and then Planning Commission will make two separate recommendations to the Council, one for the Pro Plan itself, and then one for the comprehensive plan amendment. So with those kind of housekeeping items taken care of, I will turn it over to Angie. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Good evening, Commissioners. Before I start, I'd like to just mention that I contracted the Christmas crud this morning, so I have a little bit of a cold starting, and it comes with unpredictable coughing fits. So, I have my tea here and my cough drops, but if I have one of these coughing fits, Doug, I'm going to tag Doug in, and he'll finish out for me, but...
I'll do my best impression of a Parks planner.
Yeah. You mean a director or a planner?
I said planner.
Okay.
I wasn't going to go too far.
Fair enough. But I apologize in advance, it happens, so I just want to give you a heads up there. Again, I just wanted to thank you for your time that you've spent reviewing our document. We've spent a lot of time, it's been over a year in the process, and making a lot of public process, and we're delighted to have you spend some time reviewing it and giving your input on that. Tonight, we kind of want to look at two different pieces, as Doug alluded to earlier. Again, we're kind of closing the loop on the review that we talked about a month ago with you, and tying up any loose ends, and having discussions related to that. There's been some discussion kind of come forward regarding heritage and historical components that I want to talk about a little bit more this evening in a presentation. Then we'll shift gears, and Doug will kind of take over and deal with the Comp Plan Amendment component of tonight's meeting, and deal with the public hearing, and then there's the action at the end of that. So, I just kind of want to open the floor right now to any discussion, or thoughts, or comments, since we've last met. And then you've had some time to process it. It is quite a large document, and we did have the matrix that was responded to, staff comments, that was made available to you in the packet. But if there are things that you'd like to talk about beyond that, I'm more than happy to have some discussion regarding that. I know Commissioner Member Brooks did just submit some information regarding heritage components. I have more of that I'd like to go through in the presentation, and then we can have a discussion on that. So I would say anything kind of outside of maybe that, to start with, I would definitely open the floor to that.
I do, Angie. I was just looking through the goals that you've set in Chapter 8, and then looking at the goals of the Parks element in the comprehensive plan. And I just had a question. The goals definitely overlap from one to the other. It does seem, though, there are goals in the comprehensive plan, A1 through A4, which pertain to playing fields and athletic fields, and they're not, they aren't noted in the Pro Plan, but I just wondered why they didn't have a specific goal associated with them like they do in the comprehensive plan?
Right. So your question is basically, why isn't their goal specific to athletic fields?
Right. And why were, and this is just from my own education, why were the goals that are in the comprehensive plan not taken out and put directly into, and I know they're associated, but they're rewritten and kind of finessed differently in the Pro Plan? Why was that done?
My understanding of that would probably be the fact that athletic fields in our review of community priorities weren't extremely high on the priority list, and other things came forward other than athletic fields. And so the goals and objectives focus on the other priorities. There is some mention of priorities in the athletic field development, you know, looking at artificial turf as opposed to natural turf, and cost-effectiveness of that. So it is kind of sprinkled throughout the goals, but there isn't, like you mentioned, a goal per se related directly to athletic fields.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, that makes sense to me. The other thing I had noticed, and I was happy to notice it just because of my own personal life, that special needs were mentioned quite often.
Sure.
And particularly in Appendix D, and they talked about that it was certainly something that in terms of programs that are being offered by the city, that it's kind of underserved. And so, and I was kind of glad that that showed up, because that is definitely, that is true. And I had wondered that maybe the city might look at talking to people like Special Olympics as a stakeholder, who would be, who would also be somebody, a group who would be able to facilitate some of those programs, too. And it was kind of noted on page 248, so I was kind, I was very pleased to see that it was noted as a gap.
Oh, yeah.
And so that was really, that was really great, so thank you.
Absolutely.
And then the last comment I had was on the maps in the plan, and it seems any time we have a discussion about any, any new amendment, any new change that we make to any kind of a document in the city, maps come up as an issue, that they are not adequate, that we kind of missed an opportunity to enhance the mapping that we offer our citizens, and that they don't kind of coordinate, and that, so I just wondered with the maps that are in this document, will we have, I wish in a way Mary Richter was here, that we could get her input and her thumbs up on the maps, because she seems to be, I'm not a cartographer, I could not tell you what is a good map and what is not a good map, but I really feel that this is an opportunity to do that kind of work on mapping that we always seem to miss. So, when this document goes live, and when it's approved, and when citizens have access to it, will they be able to go in, and I'm assuming it's going to be online, and will the mapping, will they be able to zoom in? Because some of the mapping on here is quite tiny, it's hard to read, they will be able to zoom in and see all the pieces to it?
Right. So, very good questions. And Mary Wickner was involved with us during the process, so she did attend a number of our public components, so. See, here we go. So, two things. The map, sorry. All right. Can we do some interpretive dance, maybe? Okay. It's like the dream you have, you know, you just, you go to school and the locker doesn't work, it's one of those nightmares. Okay. So, the maps in the Pro Plan, at the completed project, will be 11 by 17. They will fold out and be larger in the hard copy. We also do have a high-resolution document on the website right now, as well as a low-resolution document, just because the high resolution is hard for some folks to download, but those maps are very, very detailed, and you can open them. They're not necessarily interactive maps. I'm hoping to get to that point sometime on the website, but that's kind of another, another project for us, so. But Mary was involved in the public process.
Okay. That's great. I'm glad to hear that she was, because any, she will find any little detail that we, that we missed, so that, that's wonderful. Thank you. That's it. That's all I have.
I don't mind going next. I recognize the hard work that the Parks Department went to getting public input, and I really do appreciate that, because I think that's one of the hardest things to do. However, in reading the plan, I would think that sports and activities would have been the top priority, and I was surprised at our first joint meeting to find out that trails and open space and conservation were the top priority. But this plan appears to lack emphasis on those concerns. I appreciate the few locations in the plan that reference open space and preservation. On page 48, there's a list and a description of existing natural preserves on page 48. On page 95, there is a list of the types of lands that should be preserved. A map of where those conditions exist in the city would be worth a thousand words. So in that case, I agree with you, I see. I think the city has the mapping available to create that plan. As an example of what mapping can do, the trails projections shown on the maps on pages 131 and pages, and page 133 are great guidelines for the future. And I say that even though you took a trail right through my yard.
Just a corridor.
So, the map, it really goes a long way with me. What worries me is that open space and conservation will be passed off to the environmental section of the code, which is platitude-oriented. And the trail linkages will be lost between transportation and parks. Some department needs to take responsibility for these issues that are, that all go together, and they are rated highest in the public mind. Open space and conservation can and should influence so many other planning decisions, housing and transportation included. I was hoping the Pro Plan would guide us. I commented on the confusing maps through our written response at the December meeting, and I see that the maps in this section are all still confusing. With poorly placed labeling, some of the labeling completely blocks out the park, like Ebright Creek, it's small, so, and the words are big, so it blocks it out. You can't see it. It has incomplete keys, it has misleading colors and descriptions, and even the city limits that line, raises questions that require an explanation. Some of the parks look like they're in King County, and the, the plan says they're in the city, so I don't know if the line is right. I'm not arguing with the emphasis on sports and activities. I am only trying to bring the environmental concerns, the top priority shown in public surveys, up to that level in this plan. Our Comp Plan needs to be more aspirational, a Matthew word, and more inspirational, so it can guide us, rather than just record our activities.
Anyone else that'd like to speak? And there'll be time after their presentation, too. I'm guessing this is just time for comments, questions. Okay. All right. Go ahead.
Okay. So if I can see if I can get my cough back here, let's, let's proceed. See, I don't do it when nobody else is talking. So, as I mentioned earlier, there it goes. There was some, some more conversation regarding heritage and historical and cultural components for our city, and in the Pro Plan, and the role of that in the Pro Plan. The Parks Commission had a very robust discussion about this last night, again, as well as a month ago, when they reviewed the plan in detail. So I wanted to share with the Planning Commission some of the discussion that we had, and the results of the changes recommended to the current draft of the Pro Plan tonight as well.
Oh, sorry, Angie, I'm sorry.
Yep.
I'm just a little bit slower tonight. But I'm thinking, maybe can we respond to Jane's comment before we start going on the cultural heritage? Because I'm just...
I'm sorry.
Can we respond to Jane's comment about the trails, and just, she spent so much time talking about it, and it will leave my mind if we don't...
Absolutely.
...get to it now.
So...
Then we can change gears and go to cultural.
Sure, absolutely. So Jane, I want to respond to the, the page 48 that you mentioned, and the three preserves that are listed on that page. Are those the ones that you are recommending be highlighted in a map by itself? Is that what your suggestion was regarding, when you were talking about page 48? It was early in your statement.
No, I, I guess what I was trying to do by pointing out that there's two places where I found reference to what I'm talking about. One is on page 48, and I believe the other is on page 95. So it's very, they're very small, little places in the code that are in the plan. Tiny amount of space is allotted to this subject.
Okay, I see what you're saying. So the topic itself you'd like to see elaborated?
The topic itself, and then the map that I would like to see would be one that would show lands that are, that fit the conditions that you list on page 95. You list the types of lands that should be preserved. We, we do have mapping that you could put together something that would really help guide us, as far as other entities are concerned, as far as housing and transportation, as far as utility locations, as far as lots of things.
Okay. So, so I want to clarify what I think you're, you're saying, so I can get it correct, that the characteristics described on page 95 of the natural area preservation, if there were some mapping capabilities that illustrated the things you talked about, like water quality, habitat, erosion control, things like that, that would map out...
Exactly.
...that within the community?
There's, there's mapping showing creeks and drainage. Those are natural areas for, that you would want to say, maybe this would be a good area.
Right.
If it's, if it's aspirational, it's not, it's not really what's there, but it shows what is possible. I think that it inspires us to do something, other things, better than we're doing now. It guides us.
And then I would also like to respond to your comments regarding the, the maps in here. So our challenge is, is that we have a large geographic area and small parks, for the most part. So when you map it out, the maps are pretty small in relation to the rest of the graphic. So the challenge becomes when you're labeling that, do you put it off to the side, or do you put the name directly on top of the park?
Off to the side, definitely, and it can have a little arrow if you want.
Or you could key it, yes. But it becomes, it, we've actually worked on this quite a bit, just to address the comments that you're making, because it is, the mapping isn't probably ideal, but it is a very challenging task to do, just based on the geography. I'm trying to get to the page I'm talking about. So map, oh, I'm in the wrong section. Apologize. Inventory component, here we go. Chapter 5. Map 1, which is page... Where's our inventory map? Well, let's use, for example, map 2 on page 79, it would be. And so our challenge is, if you start to move labels of parks, then those labels sit on other things like school facilities, and then people associate those with, that's being the park. So we have had some challenges in this, but we will take your consideration, your comments into consideration of maybe moving to the side with a leader or a line as well. Like I said, though, earlier, these maps will be larger in the final production, they will be 11 by 17s, and they will fold out from the document, which will help a little bit as well.
Just look at Ebright Creek Park on there, and see what that's going to do on 11 by 17.
Correct.
It's not going to help it much.
Right. So we'll look at that, we'll look at those again, and maybe offsetting some of them to...
Here you have...
So you can see the footprint of the park in there.
Right. You need to see the footprint and the size, so we know how much, just glancing at it, how much area we have in park space. We also need to see linkages between parks. And when you get up into the Beaver Lake Preserve, and up to the Stephen and Rosina Kipper Preserve, that ties in, in a lovely way, into those great big areas, one in King County, and the other, the Hazel Wolf, Wolf Wetlands. If you move those words around, move that labeling, you start to see the linkages.
Right.
And it starts to mean something. The map then has power, it has readability. It makes such a big difference.
Okay, noted.
And then you made a comment... It's a data visualization, I think. There's a lot of movement in data visualization this day and age, and Jane's right, when you start seeing these patterns, and you start seeing these overlays, you start seeing things that you would have not have thought of before. And so I think what she's saying is that we can make these maps have more utility than I think we're currently thinking of them as, and that might be a good approach. You could also do a break line, and maybe break the city up into four pieces and have bigger chunks, you know, that doesn't help necessarily with the, with the linkages, but it does solve the other problem. Look at, I don't know, take a look at some National Geographic mapping, they do a pretty good job of making a lot of complex information be very clear.
Great. And then Jane, you also had some comments about city limits, line, and parks outside of city limits. You said a couple of them.
Look at Northeast Sammamish Park.
Correct.
It appears to be in King County, is it?
So that's probably a labeling issue, that Northeast Sammamish Park is actually west of the city limits at that. It's underneath the word. The, the large green is the Evans Creek Preserve, so...
That, it, it, that's not readable. So then...
Right.
When, I think the Stephen and Rosina Kipper Preserve are in, that's inside the city limit. city limits, but it looks like it's not. That would be another one.
Okay.
So I start to question some of these that, they say they're in the city limits, but the line is not in the right place, or it needs an explanation. It needs to say, it's really a city park, but it's in King County.
Or maybe we just need to move the labels with, inside the city limits.
Right, I think for the Kipper Preserve, yeah, if you moved, yeah, the Kipper Preserve, if you moved the label off of the top of the actual park...
Then you could actually see it.
It would be visible, yeah. You'd see the city limits and that the actual preserve is inside the city.
What about the 30 Acres Park? Is that in the city or in the county?
It's in the county.
One of the things, as I was listening to the commission's talking, but I went up and looked at the legend, and the legend actually, if you removed all labeling, the legend gives you a picture of to whom the parks belong. I don't know if that's grammatically correct.
True.
So as Jane kept talking, I could see, wait a minute. Immediately, the 30 acres is very dark. It's not part of Samamish's little checkered green and white ones. So you, I think you've done a good job on the color coding and now it's the labeling factor, but I wouldn't fool too much with that. To me, the dark areas don't belong to the city. They're somebody else's.
Right. And we shouldn't be spending too much time on this, just because we're supposed to be looking at this at a really high level. But good comments, I'm sure Angie will take them into consideration.
Yeah, no, and it is. You know, we work with this document for a year and after a while you kind of lose sight of those little details. So to, just the comments of if you move the label off to the side with the leader, that might solve it right there. So I appreciate those. Yeah, thank you. Okay, so back to...
Yeah.
Thank you. So again, I just wanted to reiterate that the Parks Commission last night spent quite a bit of time on discussing heritage and cultural components and revisions in the pro-plan, and I wanted to kind of share with the Planning Commission tonight what the results of those decisions and the conversation were last night going into our discussion. So one of them was the Chapter Six introduction, and they wanted to add more of a kind of a cultural component to that, and the edits there in red are what the final kind of proposed version of that is going to be. But they wanted to add some more verbiage recognizing the cultural diversity of the community. So that, last piece of that sentence was added for that. Also in Chapter Six and the figure, talking about recreation providers and services offered, the Samamish Heritage Society was added with the services of historic preservation and education as well. So that'll be in the new version. And then this component here, we discussed for probably a good 45 minutes last night. There was Doug Engleton, who is also a Samamish Heritage Society member, is a member of the Parks Commission too. So he brought forward some suggestions and language, and we talked about it as a group for quite some time. This is the last paragraph found in Chapter Six, really kind of discussing and recognizing heritage for Samamish. And the sentence in the middle, highlighted in red, underlined, is the verbiage that the group decided on to add to the document, to kind of strengthen the inclusion of recognizing historical and cultural resources within the Parks and Recreation Department. Not necessarily it's the city as a whole, but what can the Parks and Recreation Department and the pro-plan do for those values? And how do we incorporate that? So that's what was added last night with the group as well. Couple other things I wanted to highlight as well. Oh, kind of kinds of fun stuff going here. There we go. Also included in the pro-plan, Chapter Nine and Goal 1.7, interpretive signs throughout the park system is a goal, and highlighting natural systems, community and history is definitely listed as a goal throughout our entire park system. The city also partners with the Samamish Heritage Society, which you're probably aware of, and they provide historical preservation services and public education through a contract with the city and city funding to support those efforts. The Parks and Recreation Department also works with the Heritage Society in providing those services and administering that contract with them. There's a partnership we have also with the Reed Freed House that belongs, that resides on the Big Rock Park B parcel, and the city technically owns the house, but the Heritage Society has spent quite a bit of time and effort and grant money on restoring that building, and we're working with them together on those efforts. We're also going to be kind of revisiting the master plan to that park and including programming of that house and adding some really pretty cool historical components outside of the house as well, even down to the detail of the landscaping around the house being reflective of the period of when that house would have been built and what the plants would have been outside that house. So we're pretty excited about that. We do, whenever we do any master planning for any of our parks, of course, historical review and incorporation of those elements are always included in the design process. And currently, we're actually working on putting some interpretive signs with some artifacts at the Samamish Landing Park, and that will be installed this summer as well. The Planning Commissioner from last night brought forward the city code regarding heritage and I think was trying to incorporate some of that into the pro-plan in, under the umbrella of the Parks and Recreation Department. But when you really look at the code and what it says, it's mostly implemented by the Department of Community Development, not necessarily the Parks and Recreation Department. So I just kind of wanted to highlight some of those things for discussion tonight. I also wanted to bring forward some data that we used in the pro-plan related to this. We, one of the community engagement components we did was a household survey, mailed out 4,000 of them through the months of February, March of last year, and we had a tremendous response rate of 856 returned to us, and that's a 22% response rate, which is really excellent. And it was statistically valid with a 95% confidence rate. Inside that survey, we had three kind of categories that we were asking questions about, and the three are listed there, and that's kind of the order of the priority too, that people responded to us, that preservation is kind of their priority right now, passive use of park space, and then active use and recreation is the third. And then within that, we did have a question specific to cultural and historic uses inside the passive use, and it resulted in about a 33% response. Now, people could respond to more than one in these, so that's why the percentage rates are, don't equal necessarily 100%, but they are able to choose more than one response for the answer. So when you kind of look at the opportunities within passive use, the cultural and historic sites didn't necessarily rank as a very high priority per se compared to other uses, and I just kind of wanted to bring that forward to, to show what the community was telling us and why the pro-plan is reflective of those responses.
May I interrupt you quickly to ask you a little bit about that? So if you're saying that the community at large isn't terribly concerned about heritage and cultural sites, how does that fit into this plan? I mean, if, shouldn't we be looking at preserving the open spaces and the trails or whatever people actually are interested in? And I think that the heritage around here is, we're going to have to create it. So I don't want to get too political, but what's the point of going after something that doesn't, we have to create and people aren't terribly interested in anyways?
Well, I think the point that we're trying to make here, I believe some of the feedback that we're receiving is that there should be more included in the pro-plan and higher prioritization of heritage components in the plan. And we're kind of saying, staff is saying, well, according to what we're hearing from the public, that isn't what they're saying. So that's why we don't have more in the pro-plan about it. We don't have a tremendous amount, it's not a high priority in the pro-plan. We have some people saying that they want it to be a higher priority. We're saying, based on the information that we've collected, it's probably not necessarily a higher priority.
Okay, so you're saying, the public is saying it's not a higher priority, that's why it's not reflected as a higher priority of the plan? Okay, gotcha.
Right, right.
I'd like to make a comment on that. I think that there's, and we've talked about this before, so a third of the people thought that it had some relevance, right, which is significant.
It's not necessarily a third, it's not necessarily a third of the people. People were given the option to choose of six responses, and of the choices, of all of the choices, 33% selected culture and historic. Wasn't necessarily 33%.
Matthew's comment brings up another thing that we had talked about before, and that was the, it's kind of a chicken and egg thing. Until you know a little bit about the culture and history up here, you don't know it exists. And I think a lot of the community exists in that realm. And you'd be really surprised when they learn about it, that it goes up significantly. So I think that's one of the challenges here, and I think that there was a recognition of that fact. So I don't know that it's necessarily something that you can put too much stock in, one way or the other. So that's just observation.
I know we're trying to move along, but I guess this, I kind of like, no, I do like the direction. I see the document taking and the direction that the Parks Commission had last night. There's another historical feature that we need to be aware of, and it's pretty hard for some of us to, to take, and that is, when the Reed Freed House was moved, there was actually two lawsuits put in against the movement of that to the Attorney General. And there was people that fill in this room, speaking against the movement of the Reed Freed House. So I would say, let's go ahead with what you have there. It can be modified later, and we've opened the discussion. But right now, unless you go back out to the community, this place is full of many people did not want to see that moved, for many reasons. And there was lawsuits that didn't materialize, but they, it got moved, okay. And I was there at 2:00 AM in the morning while they were moving it. Okay.
Larry makes a good point, and I think it relates to Eric's point when Eric says that, you know, sometimes you don't know things exist until you kind of get out there and see them, and that's a great example. Like Larry said, you know, maybe nobody really cared about it until all of a sudden it was going to leave, and then people really do care about it, so.
I'm sorry, though, I have to comment on that. I think we have to be careful as a city about picking and choosing our heritage and not only choosing the sort of romantic aspects of our recent history. You know, I'm sure we have as dark a history here dealing with the Native Americans as we did, as the rest of the country has. And then, you know, the place was clear cut and logged, and there's still evidence of that out in Lake Samamish with the piers where the old mills were. And, you know, the railroads are romantic and the chicken farms are romantic, but I'm not comfortable with sort of whitewashing pieces to have interpretive railroad signs unless next to it there's a, you know, like one of those big cross-sections of one of the huge trees that we cut down here and says, this is what was here, you know, where your house is now. And that's, that is, that's an unfortunate part of our heritage, but that's what we were doing back at the time.
Right.
Good comment. It's obviously a touchy subject, I think. We're learning.
Right, right.
I do, I agree with Larry. I think the changes that have been made so far are good, and I guess we'll find out if some of the commissioners during deliberation want to add to that. We'll see what we, see what we come up with.
Right. So that kind of concludes the first part of this about closing the loop on the review. So do you want to shift over to the comp plan?
Thank you, Angie. So as I alluded to earlier, there is the second component to this proposal, which is the comprehensive plan amendment that the commission is probably already pretty familiar with, based on the docket conversations we had at the end of last year. So the crux of this is ensuring the consistency of our current comprehensive plan with what's being proposed in the 2018 update to the pro-plan. So I would classify this more as a cleanup or a kind of a minor revision. There's nothing that is incredibly significant that is changing, and we provided the red lines in the packet, as I mentioned earlier. But we've also got just a couple of quick slides of little snapshots of the changes. So for instance, one of the changes in the Volume One of the Parks element is updating the inventory of parks. It has changed since 2015, when the comp plan was updated and approved. So just making sure that that is consistent with what's in the pro-plan. There are also references that we are going to be updating. For instance, on the right side of this, of the Volume One, in this page, particular page, is a reference to the non-motorized, let's see, make sure I have it correct. Trails, Bike Ways and Pathways Plan, which is no longer a current reference. So just, those types of revisions are being proposed. If there are any specific questions, we'd be happy to answer them. But there are also changes to Volume Two as well, which is really just the link to the plan itself and the name. Not a whole lot there, but we are certainly willing to discuss this further if necessary. And with that, I believe it's now time for the chair to consider opening the public hearing and taking public testimony.
Does anyone, or do any commissioners have comments or questions about the actual comprehensive plan amendment portion of the night? No? That's good, okay. Then I will go ahead and open the public hearing. Public hearing is now open. If there's anyone from the public who'd like to speak tonight on this item, we'd love to hear from you. No? Okay. It doesn't look like we have anyone in the public that wants to speak on this issue. However, I did receive an email from Mark Bowman, and so I would like to read that. Especially because there's nobody else, so now I feel like at least we have someone to speak about this. So I'll read it. It's fairly lengthy, so bear with me. And here we go.
Before you start, Chair, we probably want to indicate Mark's address.
Oh, Mark's address. Good idea.
And that he's...
Well, I don't have his address, but...
I don't believe we have that on hand.
I don't know how that goes.
So it's okay to...
Okay. And I did check with him beforehand to make sure that he was, that I had his permission to read this, so. Here we go. "So I am unable to attend the Planning Commission meeting this Thursday, January 4th. However, I wanted to express some comments related to your discussion at the recent Planning Commission meeting December 7th regarding ball fields in Samamish as part of the draft pro-plan update. Many of you seemed focused on generally excluding ball fields from the draft pro-plan update recommendation to the City Council. I would like to offer some alternative thoughts to the discussion from that evening. The role of the Planning Commission is to help or support the City Council in representing the citizens and residents of Samamish concerning community planning issues. I believe this should include all citizens and residents of the city, even when they don't directly reflect the current experience and preferences of individual Planning Commission members. Samamish is a community of mostly families. Just over 32% of the city's population is under age 18. If you include their parents, this group likely includes over half the community. These kids and their parents need, want and deserve recreational opportunities in the community that respond to them both today and in the future. I believe that suggesting ball fields should be excluded from the pro-plan update is a significant failure to perceive the needs and desires of a very large segment of the community. When I began my campaign for City Council..." When I began my campaign for City Council, one of the first comments I received was from a close friend, a resident of Trossachs, who has two boys under the age of 12. His comment to me was amusingly uninformed about city finances, but went directly to the point about this topic. Can you get the city to stop wasting so much money on that trail along the lake and finally build some more ball fields? Others expressed similar sentiments throughout the campaign. I think this is very representative of many parents in Simamish who may not have time to attend council or commission meetings and express this opinion, but whose desires should be represented in the updated pro plan. Additionally, I encourage you to consider, artificial turf fields can be, and actually are, now typically built to be pervious. Artificial turf fields conserve water and air resources because they do not need to be irrigated and do not need to be mowed. They also minimize maintenance costs when compared to grass. Many existing fields are not currently lighted. Neighbor concerns about lighting should be dealt with on a case-by-case basis, rather than generally blocking all new or renovated fields based on lighting concerns. More ball fields in Simamish will help with traffic issues. While my own kids are now past the age when they play baseball or lacrosse, I recall many instances of driving them off the plateau for a practice or game on an available field in Redmond, then back home afterward. (cough) Excuse me. Consider two teams of players with parents doing this, and you have a parade of additional SUVs on the road, contributing to traffic problems, especially at the choke points into and out of the city. And artificial turf fields, either renovation of current grass or newly constructed, can also further help with traffic, since practices and games can occur immediately after or often during rain, further mitigating the need to drive off and on the plateau. At a minimum, the city should consider providing artificial turf replacement at some of the current grass fields. An example might be Inglewood Middle School, to increase the capacity for practice and games within the city. I am not advocating that we cover Simamish in our artificial turf, nor do I think anyone else would suggest this. However, in planning for the needs of the entire community, a wide range and mixture of recreational opportunities needs to be considered and implemented to meet the diverse needs of the residents of the city. I believe the draft pro plan update, as written, mostly reflects this approach. I encourage the Planning Commission to keep this broader perspective in mind when supporting the City Council in representing all of the 65,000-plus residents of Simamish. Thanks for considering these comments." I think that's all I need to say. So, signed, Mark Bowman. So, that's one, and that will be it. So I guess I'm going to close the public hearing. The public hearing is now closed, so I will open it up for a motion, and whoever wants to make the motion tonight can find it on the second page of the memo, or I'm sure it's on our tables somewhere, I just don't see it.
Chair Collins, while you're looking for that, may I ask you a quick question? So, I don't have any problem supporting the pro plan, I mean, I know, I think, we're in an odd position, you know, this is the Parks deal, you know, if I'm looking at this through the commissioner, the planning commissioner's eyes, you know, I have some thoughts about how it entangles itself in our purview. If I have, if I generally support this, but I have reservations, is there an appropriate protocol for getting those reservations noted, other than me simply stating them? Do I, do I propose a amendment?
Well, this is, this is very difficult, because I don't know the exact answer, but I'm going to give it my best shot. So, what Mr. McIntyre had suggested to me, because I asked this very question at our, we always have a preparation meeting before these meetings, to kind of talk about what needs to get done at the meeting. And, his suggestion was, if there's anything that doesn't really require an amendment, but something that the commissioners feel they want to be heard on, then maybe we can include that in the memo. There's usually a memo that Larry and I write to the City Council, actually, we don't write it, staff writes it, and we sign off on it, and make sure that it includes what we want. So we could include something, we could include your comments in something like that, in some sort of that capacity, if, I'm just sort of offering this as a suggestion, it doesn't have to be, you can still make an amendment if you want.
No, it's fine, I mean, I don't think it's my place to really suggest any amendments, I just, I do have a comment from the planning side of things, yeah.
You have some things that you really, if you feel strongly about something, then let's, I mean, let's still talk about it right now, and then we can see how everybody else feels about it, and then, either we, in the memo, we say that all the planning commissioners feel this way, or we can all, we can always also say that Commissioner Petrich feels this way, we don't have to, it doesn't, it can be either way. So, and that stands for everybody, if you're not really, if you don't feel that you need to make an amendment, but you have some comments that you feel really strongly about, let's go ahead and put them in the memo to City Council, so that they're aware of our reservations, if they have any.
I want to, as vice chair, I'd follow up on that, we do look over the information from staff, and then, and edit, and get it back to them and sign it, there's a process. But I like what Matthew is saying. I think one of the things that has been lacking is the handing off at the city, to the City Council. They have to read all these amendments and discussions, but if there's, one of the council, or one of the commissions states this, if we emphasize that, and even one of us be there verbally to support that, I think this is going to help, because it gives the, I can't speak for the City Council, but it gives them an opportunity to discuss that with a member of the Planning Commission. So, I think that's a great idea, what you're saying.
If I may, Chair Collins, can I add a point? We, in that conversation, I think that you articulated essentially what we talked about. The comment I would have now is, I think it is probably best to see how the commission votes, because what we've done in the past, and this is actually going back to, I believe, the sign code, if my memory serves me correctly, that there was a certain number of, there was a majority vote, and then there was a minority vote, and we allowed, or we encouraged the minority vote to provide a minority report, and that was included in the recommendation memo. So that way, council understands that, yes, there was maybe a majority vote to recommend the plan as presented or as amended, but there were other commissioners who felt that X, Y, and Z were important, and those were included in the recommendation memo. So I think that that is where we might want to leave it today, is to see how the vote goes, if there is a dissenting vote, or more, there can be a segment of that recommendation letter that has the points that are important there.
Okay. And it looks like Director Thomas has some advice.
Well, good evening, Planning Commissioners, and Happy New Year. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but just to chime in briefly here on this tangent that you've started here in the last minute or two, I would recommend generally to go with what Doug just said. The discussion about, excuse me, about presenting a planning commission report or findings to the commission on each item, that's a practice that we actually were really doing a couple of years ago. You'll recall, the former Chair, Ryan Coleman, and at the time Vice Chair, Frank Plow, who went on to become Chair, of course, for a period of time. That, that practice, Ryan and Frank, they actually found that practice to be quite taxing. You already have 20 commission meetings a year, on average, and, and then, they were attending several council meetings, you know, as each item was moving forward from the commission to the council. I think that's a discussion we should probably have on another evening, as to the wherewithal of the current commission to do that. Your volunteers, and we're very appreciative and grateful of the time that you put in, just coming to 20 planning commission meetings a year, and then for the Chair and Vice Chair, as mentioned a moment ago, prep meetings that typically occur either by teleconference or in person, for each of your regular meetings throughout the year. So, that's a, that's a great topic. I know Kelly's hoping, perhaps, at one of our March meetings, to start a little bit early and have a little bit of a Planning Commission work program retreat for 2018, maybe that's a subject we could take up with you at that time, and talk about that a little bit. But certainly for the purposes of this evening, I think if there are, if there's additional information, Doug and Kelly, and Angie in this case, are going to craft, I think, a good memo for the Chair and the Vice Chair to review, and there's certainly a minority report, or a dissenting report that needs to be included in that, we'll certainly document that and do that, and to make sure it's to the satisfaction of the Chair and Vice Chair before it gets signed and moves forward to council.
Excellent, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
But how does that, if I'm not a dissenter, but I have reservations, is there a, a place for those comments that I might want to make on the pieces that would pertain to the planning portion, or how this would implicate the Planning Commission?
Yeah, so, so during your deliberations here this evening, certainly feel free to speak up, and actually request to the Chair and Vice Chair and staff that that be included specifically, and we will certainly do that. And our interest here is making sure that the views and the positions of the commission, you're ultimately going to vote one way or the other here this evening, hopefully. It's important, though, for specific ideas, or specific positions on certain things, or on the plan in general, that those be included. So, as robust as that memo from the Chair and Vice Chair to the City Council needs to be, we'll ensure that it is.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Excellent. Okay, let's go ahead and start with a motion. And do we need to do one at a time, Mr. McIntyre, or do we do?
Preferably, yes, we'd need to make two separate motions, yeah.
Okay, so let's start with, we'll start with one first, and then we'll do the second one, okay.
I move to recommend City Council adopt the 2018 pro plan update as presented.
Okay, there is a motion to recommend to City Council to adopt the 2018 pro plan update as presented, and there is a second. So now, we can deliberate. I'm actually going to, I'll start with deliberations tonight, because mine is relatively simple and very straightforward. I want to actually thank the Parks Commission and staff, as well as, or, I'm sorry, I want to thank the Parks and Recreation staff, as well as the Parks Commission and the consultant, for producing such a comprehensive document that takes into consideration the parks, recreation, and open space needs of all the residents of Simamish, and sets forth a reasonable and affordable plan for updating our parks, open space, and recreation programs. I am thankful for all of the public outreach, especially the statistically significant survey that was completed. I am supportive of the pro plan document as it is today, and am ready to recommend it to the City Council. So, who wants to be next? Mr. Petrich, go ahead.
I'll go next, Chair. No, I agree, I think this is a huge undertaking, and I absolutely want to be deferential to the Parks Department and the commission. And I'm glad, I think, the second time around, I realized that there is not the emphasis on ball fields, you know, sort of exclusive use ball fields for one sport, that are artificially turfed and oxillarily lit. So I'm glad, I'm glad to come to that understanding, because that is a big thing for me, I think, if we're, if most of the people are responding that they want to see open spaces and habitat and preserve trees, I totally support that. And then the only other reservation I have is around this historic preservation. It's just a super tricky topic, that I think we need to approach very carefully. So I'm glad that it's included in this, and that it isn't locked down, because it needs to have room to breathe and grow as we figure it out.
Do you want, you go ahead, Eric, I've already talked a lot.
Well, I'll apologize in advance for my, probably going to show my ignorance, and just kind of misunderstanding of the process a little bit, and, you know, I thank you for the hard work, and thanks for the kind of, the Parks heritage background, I think it is helpful. I'm always looking for opportunities for kind of multiple connections, nexuses of, nexies, nexuses of things to come together, and, and I understand that we, we all look at things through our own lens of experience, and, and, and that's what makes us diverse and different and all that, and we've heard about, a lot about, kind of supporting that, and that's a good thing to do. I was part of a stakeholder meeting, as part of this, and, and I struggled to see where those comments made in that meeting were actually implemented, and was wondering if I should even expect that. And I did ask a question last time about how robustly the comments were addressed in the, in the pro plan, and the comment, or the response was that they were, essentially, they were typed up and they're included in an appendix. But that's not really the, my question, wasn't about that, it was about how, were they actually incorporated in there? And I might ask that question again, in an attempt to be more clear, but, again, I don't, I don't really know how this process is supposed to work. Maybe you can help me understand that a little bit more.
So, through our community engagement process, we had more than 1,100 touches from the public involved in this process, and in many different forms. Open houses, statistically valid survey, online emails, and you name, name the gamut, and we had those. Those are sometimes weighted differently, when you have self-selecting ways to have input, or you have something like a statistically valid survey, which is completely random. So we will, at times, weight things differently, weight input differently, because you can have an open house and have five soccer teams show up, and kind of load that open house, you know? And if you just by the count of dots for preferences, you know, all of a sudden, you have 200 responses for athletic fields. So we have to kind of keep that in mind, but that still shows, you know, people are interested and involved, and we appreciate the input. I guess, the bigger piece to this, related to the heritage component, is, we do incorporate it in our park planning, we have it in our interpretive signs, we're very respectful of it in our park system, in our open spaces, in our programming. But at the same time, we as a city, don't necessarily have, you know, we don't have dedicated staff for this, we don't have dedicated funding for this. Other cities have different approaches, this city chooses not necessarily to do that. And they do fund the Heritage Society, but again, that's an outside nonprofit group. So, in that capacity, and in that viewpoint, you know, we're a little hesitant to really heavily load the pro plan, and make the Parks Department responsible for a lot of heritage preservation, when it's maybe not necessarily the priority of the city. So, it's included, it's woven throughout the plan, it's in there, and we do participate in that program, as I gave some examples of that, of how we are doing that. But I'm afraid to really make it a big, huge priority in the pro plan, when it's not necessarily supported by the community for that.
So, but the comprehensive plan has pretty robust support for it, so.
Right, and the comprehensive plan, though.
The comp plan is supported by the community, therefore, I guess I'm seeing a little bit of a.
Correct. And the comprehensive plan also oversees the entire city and all the departments of the city government. So I guess what I'm trying to say is that it feels like, that we're not the Parks and Recreation and Cultural Department, you know, we are the Parks and Recreation Department. So, I'm just trying not to get ourselves overcommitted as a department, even though we are involved with heritage in our park design, and the programs that we provide, and we're very sensitive to that, we have some projects coming down the pike, some land acquisitions I can't really disclose yet, that will embrace and highlight a lot of this, but I can't disclose that at this time. So, I guess my point is that, you know, we, Eric, we've heard you, we've heard the Heritage Society, we've heard from Doug, and we have provisions in the plan to help support that, and it's in there.
Right, and I appreciate that. The kind of smattering of one or two, three, six-word additions that I've provided, don't seem like a great amount of effort, nor do they seem unreasonable or out of alignment with. with community expectation, maybe? And so, like Larry said, you know, when something comes up, people come out. And so, yeah, I don't, I understand your difficulty in it. It's an odd thing in the city, and I think that it's kind of the redheaded stepchild getting kicked around a little bit from one side or the other, no one wanting to actually lay claim to it. And I don't know that that's what the community wants either. Maybe if the community doesn't want it, we just remove it from the comp plan, we remove that language, and then there's no community expectation that things are going to be happening. It could be another approach. So, you know, I don't know that we need to go through all of these, but you can see, I've put my kind of additions in red, and there's, it's not very much. And there are some other areas that are, have just yellow, maybe red and yellow, and that's, I mean, there's something there that could be said. I haven't figured out what to say there for sure, you know? So there's a couple of things that kind of address, an email I sent to you the day after our last meeting, that I didn't get response on, so I was trying to kind of, you know, make sure that they still lived, I guess. I would appreciate some, kind of trying to look at it a little bit through my lens, and take a look at these things, and see if these are like horribly unreasonable asks. I hope that one would find that they're really not.
Has the Commission had a chance to look at some of the things that Mr. Brooks is proposing? I think we're all kind of flipping through it as we go. I think it, I think it would be hard as a Commission to go line by line, and I don't, I don't actually know how to handle this.
Are we at a point where it's, it's too late to be adding text?
That's what I'm, that's what I'm not sure.
It's pretty trying right now, actually, because, like I said, the Parks Commission had their second big review last night. It's kind of a weird timing issue, because they meet on Wednesdays, and the Planning Commission meets on Thursdays. The next steps of this are the handoff to the Council in two weeks, on the 16th.
Because I don't think we're saying that, you know, that the city and residents, we all support, you know, the historical preservation of the city, you know, as a, as a philosophy, as a way of which we like to live our life, right? And I think as projects come up, if we, if the city, if the residents garner enough interest in something, the city is willing to listen to issues, right? So, yeah, I just think, whereas I see Eric's point totally, and I agree with it in its essence, really, do I just wonder, is, are we past that point of adding anything new that hasn't gone through your process for adding text? You know, gone through stakeholders, gone through surveys, you know, that kind of meet that litmus test of saying, yes, this is something that our residents have said they want to see in our, in our document, you know? So I just wonder if we've kind of passed that point, whereas, because I'm assuming everything else that's in this document kind of came through that whole process of the surveys, the open houses, all of those types of things, that even though personally, I like what Eric has put in, but I, but I'm just one opinion, I'm just one person, as opposed to this being a document that represents the whole city.
Right. Oh, go ahead, Doug.
I think there's one, there's one, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
There's one item on here that I do think is valuable, and it gets to some of the comments that Jane had earlier, too. It's in the goal sec, it's part, I'm sorry, there aren't any page numbers on Eric's piece, but it's the part, it starts with engagement and promotion, and it's from page 137, and it's, he's added a goal, and it's goal 1.8. And it says, identify opportunities to preserve open space, natural areas, and the historic resources that often accompany them. If I were to pick any of the edits from what he's, you know, what he's presented, to me, you know, I heard from Jane earlier that she wanted to beef up the, you know, preservation of open space and natural resources. I would be supportive if the Commission was supportive to make an amendment to include that goal, if, if the Commission desires.
Well, I wonder, though, is that, is that already sort of implicit in the bigger plan we have of preserving open spaces? Aren't we already looking for those opportunities?
Right, I mean, yeah.
Chair Collins, can I interject, please? So I think this is a great discussion, and I think we anticipated this, because if you recall at the last meeting, toward the end of this topic, there was actually some pretty similar discussion about what is the Planning Commission's role, what is the city asking the Planning Commission to do? So I want to jump in here and just kind of take a step back for a second. So at that meeting, we did say that ultimately it is up to the Planning Commission. However, we were suggesting that the Commission take a broader approach as a way to carry out the real role of the Planning Commission in terms of the consistency of the comprehensive plan, how this relates to other planning documents, the city's vision, all of that stuff. So where we left it was that that was a suggestion. But I think that it seems like there might be some desire to actually do some red lines that, in addition to what the Parks Commission has already done. So what I might ask the Commission to do now is potentially just put it to vote as an amendment, and then see where it goes. And that way, we can kind of move forward. I want to make sure that we're making progress toward an ultimate vote. So just, just wanted to add that for the discussion. Thank you.
Why don't, I guess, I'll make, can you, I'm trying to think of how to word the amendment. So...
Well, let's, let's let Commissioner Brooks make the amendment.
Okay.
Let's do that. And then we can, he can make the amendment, and we can vote on the amendment.
What amendment, what have you said? Sorry, how it sounds like, huh?
Well, you know, you, you make it how you want it. That was my suggestion. But if you, you could make an amendment to say, I want all the red lines, and we can vote on that. So it's kind of your...
Yeah, that would be difficult. So I'm not real sure of the best way. I, a little frustrated, and that comes, I think, I'm going to take it upon, a misunderstanding that I have about not knowing what to expect or how this works. So I want you to know that I'm taking, taking that responsibility on myself. I just, I feel that when I read, like, environmental, that word, and then you look at that through the lens of SEPA, historic preservation's in there, right? And so it's, it's, it's already in there, but we're not talking about it. Yet it's implicit, it's implied, but we're not saying the words. Why not just say, what, that's all I'm asking, is let's just say the word once in a while. I don't understand where, instead of dancing around it, it just seems to be a little more direct. I don't, I don't understand about it. The other part is, is just, has to do with the fact that, or the feeling that some of the comments weren't necessarily addressed whatsoever. For example, speaking to Jane's comment earlier about, you know, data visualization and understanding the nature of this gap analysis and where these parks are, and then seeing, also layering on that, where these cultural and historic sites are, and their properties associated with them, and then understanding about how that relates to open spaces, parks. And you start being able to achieve multiple goals with one action. And until it's in the language, it's not going to be in the, in the, in the mindset as one is looking for these things. And it's just going to get left out. That's how we are. We're humans. We're not supercomputers. We can't keep it all there. It has to be in front of you to remember it. And that's all I'm asking for, is to have some understanding or some recognition that, you know, under page 11, farmlands and forests, it doesn't say anything about that there's a single old farmhouse standing in the whole city. It seems like it's worth mentioning that there actually are, because people don't understand, don't know.
Commissioner Brooks, I'm sorry, let's, either we'll do an amendment, or...
Right. So are these things that could be done with a handoff?
Or we should vote, I guess.
Types of things that would be served in a handoff?
I mean, I, we could attach it to the memo.
And I'll go on a little bit more, it's just that...
I mean, we could, we could attach it to the memo. I don't, I don't want anyone to feel that they're not being heard.
And I do feel like that, and I'm sure that I am being heard, but, you know, a month ago, we're talking about, well, we don't have time to change this now. But a month ago, a lot of these things I brought up, and six months ago, I brought up some of these things, and so it seems, but what I'm hearing is Angie really doesn't want it, because it ties her to having to be the steward of it, and which is something that her department doesn't feel like they want. And I guess if that's the reality, then it doesn't matter what I say.
Well, I don't think we should make it personal, because the plan does reflect the, you know, the needs and wants of the community. So I think either, I'll either call the vote, or we'll, you suggest an amendment, so let's do one or the other.
I have some concerns as well, and I don't know what those, do you...
We need, let's hear it.
Let's hear from Director Thomas.
Oh, I didn't even see him standing there.
He's like magic.
Yeah, quiet.
Yes, I'm very stealthy. So again, it, I think there's a little consternation going on about whether to vote on some text changes that one Commissioner in particular is, is interested in seeing move forward. And so I just want to reiterate, again, I think Doug may have covered this a minute or two ago, but this is, for Commissioner Brooks and the rest of the Commissioners, this is your time. If there's, if there's changes that you would like to see the City Council consider in the final legislative review of this Pro Plan update, this is your moment to move those forward, a motion and a second, if they're seconded, and then to discuss them and vote on them. So in terms of how that looks in your recommendation to the City Council, there will be the document that our Parks Department has, has, well documented here this evening, has put a lot of hard work into, a lot of public outreach into. There's been the Parks Commission review of that draft document, and there, I can only assume the Parks Commission recommendation will also be presented to City Council. And then there's your review and your recommendation to City Council. So again, this is, I sincerely urge you, if there's some changes you would like the City Council to consider from the draft that you've been presented, please get those on the table and vote on those here this evening. This is your moment to do that. And, and then those will be not only memorialized in the recommendation memo from the Chair and Vice Chair that we discussed here a few minutes ago now, but those will also be presented not only by the Park staff, but by Doug, to the City Council for their consideration. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very helpful.
Call for the question, because we have a motion before us. And if there's amendment to the motion, if not, we should vote.
Yeah, I agree. If there's an amendment, let's make an amendment if we need to, so I'll wait for a few seconds for an amendment.
I don't know. I also wanted to make an amendment.
Why don't you start?
My concern is that it can't be, it's so big that it can't be done.
Well, let's try.
I would like to amend the main motion to include language that increases the emphasis on the environment and preservation of lands. I would like to, in addition, add a map that shows that. I would like to also clarify the existing maps that are in this document. And I would like to include cultural activities, because they don't occur anywhere else in the comp plan, they need to be included in the Parks, Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan.
Okay, so there is a motion. I won't be able to completely do that justice, but I'll try. There is an amendment, or a motion to amend the main motion to add more emphasis on the environment to the Pro Plan.
And the preservation of open space.
Environment and the preservation of open space. To add a map that reflects that sort of beefed-up relation, and clarify the existing maps, which I'm thinking you're talking about, some of the stuff we talked about earlier, like the labeling, and just to make all that stuff more clear. And then also to add cultural activities. So there is a motion. Is there a second?
If, if we want to deliberate, we have to have the second first.
Yes.
I second it.
Okay. The motion, or the amendment to the main motion has been made and seconded, so now we can, we can deliberate on that. Mr. Petrich?
Yeah, I just would like some clarification from Commissioner Garrison about, when you're talking about the preservation of open space, are you envisioning that as in its now natural state? Or could this be a artificially turfed, oxillarily lit ball field that is open?
No.
That's not, I mean, that's not developed with buildings?
No, natural open space.
Okay. And then what are cultural...
Environmental.
What are cultural activities?
I have the same question, so.
Historical, what was in Eric's document? I was trying to include Eric's document in this.
Okay. Let's do that separate, if that's, is that a, I don't, I'm thinking that we should do the cultural part separate, because I think we could make one amendment that has to do with the environment and the maps, and then another amendment that has to do with the cultural and heritage activities.
Well, the problem is that the environmental thing includes historic resources.
So you guys want to do, you want to make it together?
Can we modify the motion, then, rather than saying cultural activities, to say preservation of historical resources, or something that captures what Commissioner Brooks is talking about more cleanly?
Fine, you can change the language.
Well, do we, what I'm trying to figure out is, do, by talking about culture activities, are we talking about including all of the red lines? Is that, is that, was that your vision, Commissioner Garrison?
Considering it, yes.
All of them, okay.
It's been seconded, so we can have a discussion about that now?
Yeah, that's what we're doing right now, is just discussing your amendment.
And what I think about this amendment is that it can't be done, because, like Eric said, I started out talking about the environment back at the first joint meeting, and it just didn't get in there. So I don't think this is going to happen. I think it's such a huge change, and the, the plan is so deficient in these things that it can't be accomplished. So my tendency is to think that I have to vote no.
Is it possible to vote no on your own motion?
Okay, well, there's, hmm, okay, there's a motion and a second to amend, amend the main motion, or, I'm sorry, is there anybody else who wants to talk about it?
Well, can we amend the motion to, to change the phrase "cultural activities" to "historic preservation," or something that is more in line with Commissioner Brooks's interest? Or do we need to...
Can I, can I interject on that specific question? Since it has been moved and seconded, you have to vote on this particular amendment. If you want, if you would like to then...
Amend the motion?
Then present another motion to amend the main motion to make those changes. That is okay, but you have to run this to ground, because it has been seconded, so.
Right.
Heard, I'll call for the question.
Yeah. Okay, so there's a motion, a motion to amend the main motion to include environment and preservation of open space, add a map, and clarify existing maps. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no.
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 Okay, so the motion is defeated. One, one to... Okay, so the motion is defeated one, one to five. So that'll entertain any other amendments? And wait for a few seconds.
If, hearing that, I'll call for the question of the main motion.
Okay. There is a motion. Oh, let me go back. There's a motion to recommend city council adopt the 2018 pro plan update as presented. And there is a second, we have deliberated. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, and that motion carries for two. Okay? So that is that part. And now we need to have another motion to do the comprehensive plan part.
I can read. I was trying to pass this off, but I move to recommend city council approve the associated comprehensive plan amendment to the Parks Element for consistency within the 2018 pro plan.
Seconded.
Okay. There is a motion to recommend city council approve the associated comprehensive plan amendment to the Parks Element for consistency with the 2018 pro plan. There is a second. Is there any deliberation on this portion? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, so the motion carries five to one. And both of those motions passed. So the next item of business is actually adjournment. So if there is no other business... Oh, sorry.
Yes. Prior to adjournment, I wanted to really appreciate what Matthew had done, and I'm looking through my notes, but I'll do it from memory. There are many cultures out there. History goes back a long ways. And I first read the book, The Hidden Life of Trees, by Peter Woltz, something. And now I'm in the process of which trees have a history that are important, on the clear-cutting. And now I'm reading the history, it's called The Inner Life of Animals. And it really takes you back and makes you think, the animals were here maybe before some of the indigenous people were. So there's a lot of culture and a lot of history out there to preserve or recognize. Okay.
And actually, I completely missed something. I, sometimes I get caught up in the process. So Commissioner Petrich, Commissioner Garrison, Commissioner Brooks, what I would really like is if you could send me a paragraph, two paragraphs, three paragraphs, whatever you want to be part, thank you. Whatever you want to be part of the memo, and I'll have staff incorporate it in their memo to city council. So I think it's going to council soon. February 4th? What'd you say?
January, January 16th.
January 16th.
Will be kind of their first handoff and review.
Okay.
It's slated to be adopted on February 20th, but there's also, in between there, a possible, another discussion slated for, I think, February 6th as well, that they can study it again.
Okay.
Yeah.
So get those comments to me by the end of the week, I think would be good.
Just...
Just whatever you want.
A little bit of prose?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just free form, and then Doug will make it sound good.
I can, I can see that.
All right. If there's no other business tonight, the meeting is adjourned, and it is now 8:04.